Welcome to this evening's meeting of the Westerville City Schools Board of Education, and we are delighted you chose to join us tonight. You can follow along the agenda on the screens displayed at the front of the room. There will be two opportunities this evening to address the board, the first being Agenda Item 6.1. The first set of public comments is relative to Agenda Item 7.1 through 12.6. Please state the agenda items you are referencing at the beginning of your comments. The second opportunity is Agenda Item 13.1. There's a sign-up sheet located on the table in the back of the room, and each speaker will have five minutes to address the board, and a timer will be shown on the screen. And with that, Ms. Marshall, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Bell?
Here.
Ms. Cotter?
Here.
Mr. Velarde?
Here.
Mrs. Davidson?
Here.
Dr. Nestor Baker is absent.
Will you please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
And first on our agenda tonight, district highlights and recognitions, and I'm going to turn it over to Rick Velarde.
Thank you, President Davidson. This is always, we just really enjoy recognizing the great work that is done in and through the district by students and by staff this evening. We are going to recognize our finance department with the excellent work that they're doing. I'm going to go to the podium. I'm going to ask Dr. Kellogg, Ms. Marshall, and the board to stand up front here, and I'll introduce kind of what we are doing tonight. The first award is really a recognition from the State Auditor's Office, and it's Tori Hugh Berry. Hubner, man. But I'm going to ask Tori to come up. She's going to represent that office and share with you why we are getting this award with distinction.
Thank you for coming.
Wonderful. Well, as mentioned, my name is Tori Hubner, and I am the Central Regional Liaison for the State Auditor. It is my honor to be here tonight on behalf of Auditor Keith Faber to present the Westerville City School District with the Auditor of State Award with Distinction. It is important to note that this award puts Westerville in a very select group. Out of almost the almost 5,900 entities that are off at audits, only 3% to 5% are even eligible for this award. This award represents the hard work of every school employee who strives each day to achieve accounting excellence, and I want to recognize the Board of Education members and the superintendent that have done just that and done an excellent job of accounting for every dollar here in the district. I specifically want to recognize the Treasurer, Ms. Nicole Marshall, for her outstanding leadership, professionalism, and commitment to fiscal integrity. Again, on behalf of Auditor of State Keith Faber, congratulations.
I would like to take this opportunity to recognize my staff. I have several of my staff members here tonight, but most importantly, Laura Hendricks, who was the interim treasurer during this period of time, and so I think all credit should go to her for that time period. But Laura Hendricks, the Assistant Treasurer, if you'd come up here, please. We also have Lydina Birdelson. She's our Benefit Specialist Associate. We have Meg Patton. She's our Secretary and Council Receivable Associate. And Kristen Gregg, she is our Fiscal Coordinator. And Debbie Cagorice, she is our Accounts Payable Specialist. And Katharina Mead, who is our Payroll Coordinator. We also have a couple other staff members who aren't able to be with us tonight, Gloria Stelter, Jody Neisley, and Christina Carney. But I want to thank these ladies for the great work that they do every day, so please give them a round of applause.
Yeah, go shake their hand. Do you want to go on?
Sure.
To prove that.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
I'm going to go ahead and say three, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten.
I'm going to read a resolution, but I first want to tell you what this second recognition is all about. It's recognizing the state track champion, that's state track champion, Mabenti Kimbe, right? Kiwi? I was this close to saying that. For 300 hurdles and state track champion and runner-up, Lissa Ziffel, right? Zeffel. I should get here like five minutes earlier and just, Lissa Zeffel, Division 400 and 800 and 100, right? I'm going to read this resolution, and then I'll bring up Coach Borland. Resolution of Commendation for Westerville Central High School, whereas some of the best student athletes in the state of Ohio gathered in the Jesse Owens Memorial Stadium at the Ohio State University on Saturday, June 1, 2019, to compete in the Division 1 State Track and Field Meet. And whereas Senior Lissa earned her first state titles in the seeded division, winning the 400, the 800, and placing second in the 100. And whereas Westerville Central High School Junior Mabenti won 300-meter hurdles, edging Dublin Scioto's second place at the finish line, therefore be it resolved that the Board and Superintendent commend Mabenti, Lissa, and Coach Ryan Borland for bringing honor and distinction to our school district and community, and wish them continued success in all future endeavors. At this time, why don't all of you come forward? And Coach, I know that you certainly would like to share a word as well. Come forward, please.
President Davidson and members of the board, really appreciate this opportunity to brag on these two young ladies for a second and really thank you for their recognition. I was real excited when I heard that we had an opportunity to come in and just get another chance to say how proud I am of these two and the way they've represented our district and our school in particular. I do want to thank Mr. I, I know he's back here, and Mrs. Klosterman in our athletic office for always providing the things we need to do what we love to do. And I want to thank the district. I know when I think of Lissa in particular, she's actually our second seeded athlete that's come through Central. We had a lot to learn, and she's taught me a lot, and the district has been so supportive from transportation to our athletic office, just to the support of the district in general has been great. And I want to say a few things just about these two and what they were able to accomplish a little over a week ago at the state championships. Lissa actually beat the defending state champion. It started in the morning with the 800 meter. A lot of people might know track and field events, but if you don't know the seeded events, they actually compete throughout the day in all three of the divisions' state championship track and field meets. So she has to be there pretty early on Saturday morning. Her first event was about 10:55 in the morning with the 800 meter, which I think is her best event. And all year long, we've been talking about what's it going to take to get to the top of the podium. She's been runner-up. She's been on the podium a few times in her career, and the goal was to win the state championship, and she was facing the defending champion from last year who just dominated. And it was an awesome race. To say Lissa put forth her best effort would be an understatement. She PR'd the first lap for the 400 and still had another lap to go. The defending champ closed on her on the back stretch. They got wheel-to-wheel on the home stretch, and what I was so proud of her was, it would have been easy to just cave in at that point to fatigue, and she had one more push in there, and it was just enough to edge the girl out at the line. Then a couple hours later, she won the 400 meter in dominating fashion, and then got runner-up in the 100, and we're so proud of her and her efforts. She's going to be going off to Wright State this next year, and I know she's going to do great things there in college. And when I think of Mabenti here, same thing. The conversation all year was about getting to the top of the podium. She's worked hard all year. She's a multi-sport athlete. Both of them are scholar athletes, which is something we definitely pride ourselves in. The goal was to get to the state meet. She was third there last year as a sophomore, try to win the 300. She was undefeated this year in the 300-meter hurdles. Both girls own the school records in all the events that they've competed in. Mabenti's championship was pretty special because the night before, we had semifinals. It was a really late night due to a number of delays. She did four events Friday night in the semifinals, came back on what I think we would agree was pretty tired and sore legs the next day, and again, she had the four-by-one relay before that, which she was all-state with our relay team on the podium, and came back and held off a great hurdler at the end and a super finish on just pure guts. And I was so proud of her, and so excited tonight that you guys are recognizing these two. They definitely have earned it, and we're really proud of what they've accomplished. Thank you.
both these athletes, I know, pushing and encouraging, and Coach, thank you for the example that you have set as well. So you all are just welcome to stay for the rest of the board meeting, and there they go. Okay, so thank you for coming.
4.1, approve the minutes of the regular Board of Education meeting, May 20, 2019, as presented. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Any questions or comments there? Hearing none.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Mr. Velarde?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes. We do not have any reports this evening. Public comments, 6.1. We have one person signed up to speak, and that is Peg Duffy.
I'm addressing Agenda Item 12.04. I recall at the last work session that one board member said, wait a minute, why do we have Longfellow on the agenda? Why don't we have Longfellow on the agenda? But I don't remember any more discussion than that, so I was surprised when I read the attachments on this. At the very end, in the parenthetical, it says, "Longfellow, no action on Longfellow because it will be removed from K-12 use." So would someone please clarify for me when that was discussed in a public meeting, so I can go back and listen to the discussion, because I don't remember it? Thank you.
I didn't catch that either. Thank you, Peg. 7.1, public meeting, Greg Vibrans. This is the opportunity from anyone from the public to come forward and express a concern, a thought, share something with us. Hearing none. 8.1, financials. We do not have any, which leads us to the personnel consent agenda. Is it okay if I take this all in one group?
Yes.
Okay. 9.1 through 9.15, may I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Dr. Hopkins?
Good evening, President Davidson, members of the board, Dr. Kellogg. It's my pleasure to present to you for your consideration tonight's personnel consent agenda. A few of the highlights include, we have two retirements. The retirements aren't effective until September 1st, but they were submitted. It's Ms. Susan Cofore. She's retiring from her post as an ESL paraprofessional at Mark Twain Elementary. She's been with the district 22 years. Our second retiree is Ms. Jerianne Patterson. She's also retiring, this time from her post as an instructional coach at Mark Twain Elementary. And again, those are both effective September 1, 2019. Ms. Patterson has provided Westerville with over 19 years of service, so we're excited to announce those two. We also have a total of about 15 resignations from various classified and licensed positions. We have some, quite a few one-time payments, as you noticed there, for a range of activities. Our staff are going to be very busy this summer, ranging from some training for crisis management for our van drivers, to course development and collaboration for our wide variety of teachers, to training of our health aides, from some of our nurses, just to name a few. There are a few amendments there for the reemployment of classified and licensed administrator contracts. We have the employment of individuals in a number of classified administrator, classified and classified substitute positions, and then we also have the employment of two new licensed administrators, numerous new teachers since that time of year, and we're excited that we have a great group of new teachers joining us next school year, and a number of individuals to summer and pupil activity programs. At this time, I'd like to go ahead and introduce three new leaders that are coming to our district and ask them to stand for just a moment. First, start with Jean Trimble. Jean, if you don't mind, please standing for just a moment. Many of you will know Jean as our current media specialist at Walnut Springs Middle School, and she's been named to be our new Innovation Space Leader for Westerville City Schools. Her responsibilities will include, among other things, helping to coordinate our Fab Lab and District Maker Movement, developing and leading professional learning opportunities for staff, developing and facilitating some summer learning opportunities for our students, facilitating projects, and serving as an Otterbine liaison with these projects. Prior to her tenure at Walnut Springs, Jean served as a media specialist at Point View and Robert Frost Elementary Schools. She earned her Master's of Education degree in instructional technology, with a school library media specialist endorsement from Kent State, and holds her Bachelor of Arts degree in business management from Webster University in Kansas City, Missouri. Any of you who have been to Walnut Springs can attest to her innovation spirit there and their media program there, and so we're excited that that spirit's going to be spread throughout the district. So thank you for stepping up to this new post, Ms. Trimble. Second, we have Mr. Kiev Lamar. Mr. Lamar, if you could please stand. He will be serving as our new Assistant Principal at Westerville South High School. Kiev most recently provided administrative leadership for Columbus City Schools, as an Assistant Principal at Champion Middle School and at Buckeye Middle School. In addition to seven years of classroom experience, he also has worked as a school-based coordinator for Big Brothers Big Sisters. He received his Bachelor of Arts in African-American Studies in 1999 from the University of Cincinnati, and received his K-12 Administrative License, as well as his MBA from the Ohio State University in 2016. So welcome to Westerville, and specifically Westerville South. Mr. Lamar, thanks for joining us. And finally, I'm pleased to-
Excuse me.
Go ahead, please.
So you got your undergraduate from Bearcat Nation.
Correct.
He's hired.
But you started to say Buckeye first. I feel like it was a slip there.
He has both. He has the Bearcat and the Buckeye.
Thank you for pointing that out, President Davidson.
I'm just saying, sorry.
No, I was trying to see, we had a bobcat later on, but the transition's not there, unfortunately. Finally, I'd like to introduce Mr. Stuart Gartrell. As many of you know, he is a familiar face to many of us around here, because he has been a physical education teacher and athletic director at Walnut Springs since 2013. He will be the new Assistant Principal split between Walnut Springs and Heritage Middle Schools. He's also, during his time here in Westerville, completed a principal internship at Walnut Springs and Westerville North High School during the 2017-18 school year. He received his Bachelor's Degree in Health and Physical Education from Wright State University, and his Master's in Educational Administration from the Ohio State University. So welcome to the leadership post there, and thank you for serving in that capacity. And that is everything. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you so much. And welcome, everyone.
Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mr. Velarde?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Okay, moving along to old business. Is everyone okay if we bundle this one, too?
Bundle away.
Bundle away, okay. I'd like a motion for 10.1 through 10.5. These are final readings on some policies and revisions.
So moved.
Second.
Any comments here? Whenever you're ready.
Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mr. Velarde?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes. Which takes us to new business, 11.1, first reading, policy 8500, food service, and Carrie Dennis is going to join us.
Good evening, President Davidson, members of the board, Dr. Kellogg and Ms. Marshall. I'm here this evening. The policy 8500, food services, is being revised in response to issues raised by the USDA in review of policies and procedures. The USDA feels an appropriate team is required to approve dietary modifications to the school's USDA reimbursable meal pattern, if determined appropriate by Students Section 504.1. So that's the first language change within the policy. The second set is recommended additional language regarding bad debt. That remains at the end of the school year in which the debt was incurred, then it must be reimbursed by a non-federal funding source, which means that non-federal funds would then pay the debt down. The USDA Smart Snacks and School Nutrition Standards are mandatory. The recommendations by the USDA reflect, I'm sorry, the changes to the policy are reflected in the language that you have seen that was provided. So the recommendation is to adopt the policy changes reflected to the current state of law to maintain accurate policies. Any questions?
Any questions or comments here? Carrie, I just have one thing. Right before the bad debt that's in green, there's a paragraph. I think that paragraph above either needs to go below, because the paragraph in green explains what bad debt is.
Okay.
Or at least that first sentence may be taken out, and that second sentence could be combined in the green. Do you see what I'm talking about there? So it says, "Bad debt."
Forty.
It's redundant, and then, yeah.
Thank you.
That's it? Thank you. Okay. 12.1, overnight and out-of-state field trips. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you.
So we have some fun trips here. Just wondering, where are the sixth and seventh graders? Who's from Walnut Springs? I know where they're going. What's the trip for? Just curious. Anybody know?
Mr. Reeves, probably.
Mr. Reeves? The Walnut Springs trips, sixth and seventh grade to New York and Chicago, do you know what that's for? Okay. We can find out and feed you in. That's okay.
Okay.
Jane knows the answer to that.
Well, I don't know about the Chicago trip, but I know New York, they did that this past year. The math teachers, they arranged it, and the students went and explored a math museum there. It was math-specific content for the sixth grade to New York. I don't know about the Chicago trip, though, but I do know they visited museums and they did a show, and they built the math curriculum.
So supportive.
Wow, that's awesome.
If you'd like, we can get you more information, get you a summary this week. Glad to do. Thank you, Jean.
Thanks, Jean. Any other questions or comments? Nicole?
Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mr. Velarde?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes. 12.2, resolution to approve an MOU with OPEC Local 719. Van drivers, may I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Dr. Hopkins is back.
Good evening, President Davidson, members of the board, Dr. Kellogg. This past year, Westerville City Schools launched the My Van Program. As you may be aware, we are very excited to report that this program has met, and in many cases exceeded, the intended outcomes that we had for providing specialized transportation services for our students. And I do have to give a lot of, all the credit to this, to Bob Line, Randy Snyder, who's with me, and the van drivers and the van aides who made this program such a success this year. Our consistent with our kind of long-range plan for this My Van Program was to bring the drivers to become employees of Westerville City Schools. And in doing so, we had to draft an MOU, which was presented to you for your consideration, that was going to exist between the district and their bargaining unit, OPEC Local 719. We're pleased to share this MOU with you tonight that was collaboratively developed and signed by the district's leadership team and the Local 719. We recommend that you approve this MOU and the salary schedule so that we may officially welcome these drivers as employees of Westerville City Schools starting next school year. We appreciate your support and are happy to answer any questions you may have at this
Questions or comments? Hearing none. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mr. Velarde?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes. 12.3, resolution granting land owned by the school district to the city of Westerville for the purposes of a water line easement. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
And Mr. Dorn is joining us.
Good evening, President Davidson, Vice President Velarde, members of the board, Dr. Kellogg and Ms. Marshall. This water line easement is being required by the city of Westerville for the installation of a six-inch fire service line and a three-inch domestic water line in support of the Westerville South renovation and expansion project. The fire service line is for adding a fire suppression system, and the domestic water line is to support the additional square footage of the building's expansions. The city of Westerville shall be responsible for the installation of the new water lines up to the meters. Construction beyond the meters are part of the Adena and Fire Systems Professionals contract that the board approved on May 6. The requested easement is 15 feet wide, consisting of just over one-half of an acre, as described and shown in Exhibits A and A1, that are part of this resolution. I think it's very important for us to note that the city of Westerville has agreed to waive their capacity fees of $164,528, as well as related building and plan review fees. We are very grateful to the members of the Westerville City Council and the city manager, Dave Collinsworth, for those tremendous savings to the district. We've requested that the city of Columbus waive their sewer capacity fee of $32,472, and we are still awaiting their reply. It is being recommended that the board grant the water line easement to the city of Westerville as presented.
Any questions? Any questions or comments? Just, thank you so much.
Mr. Velarde?
Yes.
Ms. Cottar?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes. 12.4, resolution by the school district board to accept the master plan for the Ohio Facilities Construction Commission expedited local partnership program. May I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Ms. Marshall, you wanna?
It's me. So, what you have before you is a resolution required by the Ohio Facilities Construction Commission in order for us to enter into the expedited local partnership program. Uh, the, the board had passed a resolution at a previous board meeting of its intent to go forward with the expedited local partnership program. And this is also accepting their master facility plan. To Ms. Duffy's comment earlier, with Longfellow, uh, no longer being used for other than K-12, is being, will be used for other than K-12 construction. This isn't the district's plan necessarily, so this is what the Ohio Facilities Construction Commission has come up with based on enrollment numbers. And because of the size of Longfellow, it's not included in their co-funded plan. So, that's the way they have it written out here. Does that make sense? Um, the, the building's not large enough to house enough students. I think it needs to be able to house 300 students in order for it to be able to be co-funded as part of that project. So, the expedited local partnership program will give us the ability to possibly receive a credit, um, sometime in the future when we are eligible for the Classroom Facilities Assistance Program. Right now, we, last we talked to OFCC about it, we're about five or six years out before we would be eligible. Uh, this does solidify our percentage, so the state share is 35%, which means that we would have the opportunity for projects that we do that align with the, this facility's master plan to receive a credit against a future project that we would do through the Classroom Facilities Assistance Program. Does that make sense?
It does.
I feel like it's very confusing.
Well, yeah, well, it's, anyway. I asked you this question, I think, before. Is there a, uh, end time? Is there a deadline to which we could potentially be reimbursed for future projects? That fit within the scope of what they are?
Um, I, I wouldn't say that there's an end time. So, the OFCC's annual budget is subject to-
Right.
-the state budget-
Right.
-and their appropriations and all that. So, what this is, is approving the district's facilities master plan. As it works with OFCC's numbers and guidelines and all that, the district has the facilities master plan that we've worked on, and they've sectioned out the portion that we're working on for this fall, for the ne, for the first five years of the facility master plan, and they're calling it the discrete portion. So, the things that align in that portion with the discrete portion of this program would give us the opportunity to receive a credit in the future.
To potentially receive credit in the future.
Assuming that the program works the way it's supposed to and they don't change the law and-
Well, they wouldn't do that.
They give you, they give the appropriations needed.
They, they wouldn't change the law on us. And so, that's, that's, uh, I, I just, it's helpful, because it is confusing, that this plan is, um, our plan, it's just my language. Our plan filtered through this organization that says, wherever we line up, you have the potential-
Yes.
-of receiving some, uh, future monies.
Yes.
Okay. I, I just don't want people-
Credit.
What?
I think we need to be careful of the word. Credit.
Credit.
We won't ever be given a check. We'll give credit against future projects that would be co-funded with OFCC.
Yes.
And I, I think, uh, 'cause I don't want people to think we're gonna get, I apologize.
No one send us a check. We're not gonna get reimbursed for any of our actual expenditures-
Right.
-on any of these projects.
Credit for future-
So-
-possibilities.
Yeah, down the road, if we look at doing other buildings through the Classroom Facilities Assistance Program-
Good.
-we have the opportunity to receive a credit. I think it's important to note that the opportunity, the dollars are significant at 35% for a future credit. So, if it works out, it will definitely be worth the time and attention that we've given it. But it doesn't cost the district anything to go through this process, other than our, our time and attention to it.
Right. Thanks.
The other thing I'd, I'd like to add, just be very specific and clear. Although the OFCC plan seems to suggest that Longfellow will not be in use, that's within their plan. Within our plan, Longfellow remains in use as it is today. So, it's not gonna be any different than, um, than it is today.
Confusion.
Yeah. We've got two more resolutions to go through for that.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you for helping clear that up. Thank you.
That's good. Anybody else? Whenever you're ready.
Mr. Velarde?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Ms. Cottar?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes. 12.5, a resolution of intent for the expedited local partner, partnership program, one-half mil maintenance requirement. May I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Uh, so, part of the, um, OFCC Classroom Facilities Assistance Program, it, they require a maintenance levy. Well, the district has set aside funds or to pass a levy to cover the equivalent of one-half of the mil for the district. This, um, we're not required to do it under the EL, the expedited local partnership program. And so, this resolution will defer that until such a time that we are approved for the Classroom Facilities Assistance Program. So, we currently have a permanent improvement levy that we fund for our maintenance needs for the district. So, um, it's not necessary that we ask voters to approve an additional half mil for that.
Questions, comments? Okay.
Mr. Velarde?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Ms. Cottar?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes. 12.6, resolution requesting state consents to the issue, to issue bonds. Of the school district in the amount not to exceed 120 million and to submit question of such issuance to the electors. Ms. Marshall?
So-
May I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Um, so this is what we, uh, fondly call the state consent resolution. So, we have to ask the state for, for permission in order to consider a bond issue this fall. Because the bond issue would exceed, our debt would exceed 4% of the district's assessed valuation. So, we'll, uh, ask the Ohio Department of Taxation and the Ohio Department of Education for consent if the board passes this resolution. The resolution is written in a not-to-exceed amount. Um, the 120 million is not the amount that's been set for the bonds, that the final amount hasn't been determined yet. As we've worked through it, it'll be right around $100 million, so.
Questions or comments?
It's just a requirement of the state.
Yep. The box would have to check.
Cause it's above four-
It's, it's another one of those.
Yes. Thank you.
Good?
Ms. Velarde?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Ms. Cottar?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
13.1, public comments. We have a couple speakers this evening. Laura and Emma, do you wanna speak together? Yes? Okay. So, Laura Wolf and Emma Funderberg? Welcome.
Good evening, President Davidson, members of the board and Dr. Kellogg. My name is Laura Wolf.
I'm Emma Funderberg, and we are here to speak regarding the designation of the STEM honors diploma in our district. So, at the moment, we have two honors diplomas offered, just a general one as well as the STEM honors. And one of the requirements for this diploma is a field experience that is often believed to be fulfilled by shadowing at a hospital such as St. Anne's close to us. However, that is not, like, that does not fulfill those requirements. This field experience is a research opportunity that can be sought through places such as OSU, Nationwide Children's, or any of the surrounding hospitals, or even Columbus State. However, there is no program in place at the moment to connect students with these opportunities, which becomes an issue because the application process can be long and intense. And for students unfamiliar with this process, such as those who are underrepresented minorities or women, they struggle to get this opportunity and experience that could be more easily provided. At the moment, we have over 300 students in the Health Pathway at Westerville Central alone, which is where Laura and I attend. However, we have a lot more students at Westerville North and Westerville South that don't have access to this program as well. In the last three years, only seven students have managed to graduate with the STEM honors diploma, largely due to the absence of a program that connects them with that field experience. We only have two qualified to graduate in the next year, and all nine of these aforementioned students have gone through Westerville Central, leaving no opportunity for those at North and South.
So, as a way to solve this problem, we wanna institute a new program that fulfills this last kind of capstone requirement. Now, actually, a couple years ago, the board had a program called STEM Bodies that was a board-approved program in partnership with OSU and Metro. Funding was cut for the, to this program in 2013, but this program allowed students to be paired with a research professional in a place such as Nationwide Children's Hospital or OSU. And through their senior year, they would perform research in correlation with this professor, and they would, at the end of the year, put together a presentation and be evaluated on it. And this also allowed for them to receive the STEM honors diploma that would refill that, fulfill that requirement. This provides countless life-altering opportunities to kids who really want to succeed in post-secondary and professional schools. And as well, it allows people like minorities or underrepresented people like those of color and women to succeed in the STEM field by already having something that sets them apart prior to entering a post-secondary education. And we would be thrilled to be able to present a more in-depth presentation in a, at a future date to get into more of the details if wanted, and we are free to answer any questions.
Thank you. Thank you, ladies. Up next is Peg Duffy.
The comments that I'm about to make were made Tuesday night at city council, and I wanted to be sure that both groups got the same information in the same order, so I'll try to follow the notes I used there. We knew Tuesday night that the city had a finance issue on the ballot. Uh, we weren't sure from the article that was posted Tuesday night in this week, what, whether the school board was gonna be on. Obviously, we will have the school issue on. Historically, when we talk about levies, we always use the, well, what's it going to cost the person in the $100,000 house? When I moved here more than 40 years ago, all the existing subdivisions easily fell under that $100,000. And I understand the frustration for, uh, levy chairs because they go out and people will say, "Find me a $100,000 house in Westerville." So, as you may or may not know, the city is using the figure of 200,000. My suggestion would be, and I make this to, both to you and to them, use that as an example, but still, base on what is it to the, on the 100,000? That's a whole lot easier for those of us who are math-challenged. Now, I remember in fourth grade, we learned fractions, and Mr. Dorn, you know, I, my apologies to you, but that stupid cross-multiplier never made sense. Fifth grade was a relief when we learned to set things up in ratio, and that made a whole lot more sense. What's my house worth? Most people don't know because the majority of people pay their taxes through an escrow account with their mortgage. For those of us who pay ours directly, we have a couple weeks left till we have to get the money in for the second quarter. Uh, people can go to the auditor's website and see the same thing as is what on their, what's on their tax bill, find out a lot of this. But, what's my house worth? Depends who's asking the question. If it's a prospective buyer, it's going to be a high number. It's my insurance agent, it'll still be decently high because I wanna make sure that I'm insured for full replacement value. But let's face it, if it's the tax guy, we're gonna want it to be lower. People have to understand that this is based on the auditor's valuation of the property, not what you think it's worth, not the inflated figure that Zilla thinks it's worth or anything like that. But it's easier to calculate if you use that 100,000. Please use that. Um, it's a great opportunity for voter education. So, make use of it. I say that to you and to the city, both. There have been times, unfortunately, with school levies, when senior citizens have said, "I can't afford this," and I know of cases where people were, will, will then move out of town. No, that's the perfect opportunity to say, "Are you, do you have the homestead exemption?" And explain to them what that is, when they can apply. There are all kinds of opportunities that can be combined with this. So, combine those opportunities, and please, you wanna give us examples of the, what I'm calling the median household worth, uh, value is? That's okay. But give us the 100,000. So, it's a whole lot easier to estimate. I mean, think of it as, maybe you're the person who pulls out the calculator every time you have to figure the, a tip in a restaurant. Come on. Can't you do that 10% in your head and then, you know, half of that again if it's 15 and double that if it was really a great night and you're giving them 20%?
Thank you so much, Peg. Okay, that takes us to board comments, and who would like to go first? No?
Uh, real quickly to the two young ladies, if you could, uh, stick around, uh, for just a couple of minutes afterwards. Um, I, I know we'd wanna just chat with you, just very briefly, we're heading into another meeting, but, uh, that would be helpful. Uh, to Ms. Duffy, I, I, uh, I'm, I'm, I was an English literature major, so I'm with your sister on the, uh, the math challenge piece, and I think $100,000 would be wise. I also would say that, uh, as we communicate, um, this levy, if you can help us communicate to, uh, people of a certain age how to take advantage of tax, uh, um, they're not loopholes, but tax advantages, I would appreciate your, uh, guidance on that. I, I'm, you know, I'm getting, I'm getting closer there. Um, other than that, the, the, our, our state champions and central, just, uh, really, so great stuff. Thank you for being here. I'm saying to these chairs right there, "Thank you for being here earlier." And, uh, to our new administrators, ones I know, ones I'm meeting, the ones that went to an outstanding university in Cincinnati, you know, we're just, uh, grateful that you're here. Okay, I'm gonna be quiet now. Yeah, that's it, right?
Yep. Vaughn, anything?
Um, I want to first thank the two young ladies, uh, for being here this evening and sharing your concerns and observations with us. Um, it, it takes a lot of courage, um, to first of all, to show up at a board meeting, uh, but secondly, to be here to present. So, thank you for bringing, uh, this issue, uh, to our attention. Um, Ms. Duffy, thank you, uh, so much for, um, speaking and sharing, uh, this evening what your thoughts and concerns are. Um, it's always wonderful, um, to have you share with us, to stimulate our thinking. Uh, so, thank you.
And I would just say to Laura and Emma, there are two really important people in this room. Mrs. Jennifer Knapp over there, she's gonna raise her hand. Yep, she's in charge of curriculum. And then, all the way around the back of the room is Scott Reeves, in charge of secondary, and I am sure they would love to chat with you, and you have amazing ideas. Thank you so much for stepping forward and sharing. We truly do appreciate it. Um, that takes us to 15.1. The board will meet an executive session on Tuesday, June 18th, and Thursday, June 20th at 6:00 PM here at the Early Learning Center. And executive sec, executive session, 16.1, uh, consideration of the purchase of property